Good morning. It's January 31st, 10 o'clock. We welcome you here. I ask that request that all three county commissioners are here. I ask that you rise for a moment of silence and then we'll do a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I think all three of us can say we're glad to be back in Morgantown. We've been in Charleston for several days. It's nice to be home. So we'll start with consents and approvals.
Okay, we have 12 exonerations for $5,692.83, vouchers for General County, $38,288.45, coal severance, $6,348.20, 911, $11,999.80, Camp Muffley, $3,159.31, Cessers Valuation, $338.67, purchasing card vouchers for General County, $13,999.08, magistrate court, $68.15, home confinement, $6,097.91, Chestnut Ridge Park, $753.69, Camp Muffley, $169.16, Mason-Dixon Park, $26.77, Cessers Valuation, $154.98, for a voucher total of $82,282.17. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities, West Run Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, and fiduciary orders for January 31st, 2018.
Second.
The prop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Thank you. Introduction of new employees and personnel changes. Come on down. Kat?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kat, Artis Superintendent of Chestnut Ridge Park. This is Jake Keibert. He'll be our new office manager, full-time with benefits, starting at $11 an hour tomorrow. He's doing his paperwork today. He just received his Bachelor's of Science in Parks and Rec from WVU with a minor in horticulture. So, we are very pleased to welcome him aboard.
Move for approval?
Second.
The prop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And as I said, we're thrilled to have you, and I won't have to listen to Kat tell me that she has to cover the whole time. So, we're really glad. And you're starting tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. We look forward. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you guys.
Great. Is there anyone else? Okay. Comments from the public? Is there anyone who would like to speak in front of the public? Nope. Okay. Seeing none, we will move to Colleen. Do we have any grants? And she's looking and saying, no, we don't have any. So we'll move towards correspondence.
I have none.
This is what happens when you go to Charleston, no one wants to talk to us. Okay. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay. Now, at least we can discuss this issue. New business. To consider a proven request by Sheriff Perry Palmer to hire two additional deputies. Come on down. If you want to speak to it first and then...
Yes, I will speak.
Thank you.
Good morning. First of all, good morning. As you all are probably aware, as of January 15th, West Virginia State Police are no longer handling 911 calls, and this is simply due to manpower issue. Attrition and not having classes in the last couple of years have strained their manpower. This is something that's been gradually going on. As they would lose a trooper, we would pick up the call total. How it used to work was on 911, we would alternate calls. We would take one, state police would get one, but just to the fact that they just didn't have the personnel to do it. And as of last June, they no longer had a midnight shift, so we were covering their midnight shift. So, with this in mind, we've crunched some numbers. Captain Ralston here to see what kind of strain this would put on our manpower. So I'm gonna let him go over this with you all first, and then I'll come back on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wow. Good. You're gonna go good.
Thank you.
What we wanted to do, since we received notification that the state police would no longer be able to take any calls from the 911 center, we needed to come up with a logical way to see what kind of an impact this was gonna have on our department and our call volume. So, one of the easiest ways to do that is to go back through the entire year of 2017 and look at how many calls that we had and how many calls that the state police had through the calendar year. At the beginning of that sheet I just handed out, our call total for 2017 was 38,389 calls. The state police handled 8,148 calls during that same calendar year. When you break that down into a ratio, as the sheriff had mentioned, the way this was designed at the beginning, we would take one call, the state police would take the next call that comes in through 911. That's gradually, as their manpower has decreased over time, the ratio has become more lopsided. As you can see that from last year's calls, that call ratio, we handle roughly five calls to every one that the state police did while they were still on the 911 system. Since they're not on the 911 system, we're gonna have to find a way to absorb their call volume, over 8,000 calls. So, the next step in this process was, we don't have a whole lot of time and data crunch since they went off the 911 center. So, the first thing that was done, on January the 15th, when they ceased taking the 911 calls, I went through an eight-day period to see how many calls that we took last year compared to the same dates on this calendar year. Last year, we took 800 calls in an eight-day period from January 15th through January 22nd. Beginning this year, January 15th, when we were the only ones receiving those 911 calls, our call total went up to 968 calls, which is basically a 21 call-per-day increase that we've absorbed from there. Another thing that I've been able to do just these past few days, since the 22nd, went ahead and calculated in the next seven days to see if the data changed any. This following data, which you don't have a copy of, because I just did this this morning, because we just got the numbers, the 15th through the 29th, that gives us an extra seven days just to see how this call total is going. We handled 1,750 calls this year from the 15th to two days ago. Last year, we handled 1,430 calls. When you run the numbers on that, that's a 320-call increase. It also is working out to 21.3 calls. The call volume, at least through this first 15 days, is staying right around 21 calls per day we've increased since they've dropped off the 911 center. Another thing these numbers did show us when we were looking at those, when we broke down the total calls, because we're gonna see how much manpower we need to absorb these calls. So we look at the efficiency of our department through the total calls that we handled through the last calendar year and use the number of our initial call takers that actually are the first ones to respond to these calls. We are, with our manpower, we're averaging 1,422 calls per officer for the calendar year last year. When you run that same formula through the state police's calls that they handled, they were handling about 815 calls per person they were able to do. That's one thing that we wanted to point out is the efficiency of our road officers in handling these calls. It's nearly two to one as far as the volume they were able to do. With all that data taken into consideration, it would be 5.73 additional deputies it would take to absorb those 8,000 calls from that standpoint. And that's where the numbers, that's a reasonable and data-based estimate on the number of people that we would need to absorb those calls.
So, with that being said, I've come up with a so-called quick fix for right now. I recently hired a deputy Monday, as of Monday. He'll be starting March 1st, going to the academy April 1st. So, with that in mind, he'll be at the academy until July, and then he'll do a seven-week FTO program. So I'm looking at probably September, October, before we get any help with that. So in my budget, I have enough money, I'll take that back. I'm lacking about $38,000, give or take a few dollars, to hire two more deputies until the new budget kicks in in July. So I'm requesting two more additional deputies with that, within mind that all I'll need is roughly $38,000 up until the new budget, and then we can work that into the budget. And again, keep in mind that if I do hire a couple more, if they're not certified, they're gonna have to go to the academy. So I don't see any additional help coming before September or October. And again, like I've said before, and I've told the press, and I've told everybody, we will handle every call that we get. The people need to understand that, that we're gonna send a deputy out there. But this is just something that'll help relieve the strain, and then we'll go back and visit it. We're gonna continue to keep these numbers going through for the coming year. Captain Ralston will keep them, and then we'll come back and reevaluate it again.
Before we have discussion, could we have a motion, then we could discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, my motion is to approve that the sheriff hire the two additional deputies. Well, with discussion.
Second.
The prop move in second. Discussion?
Yeah, and what I wanted to, and one thing we talked about last week, we know this is an ongoing process. We're just getting ready to head into our budget process, so we're gonna be talking about, you're talking about needing six deputies per year. Right now, we're talking about adding some on to get us some, to get some in the pipeline.
Correct.
So for this fiscal year, you're looking, as far as it will affect the budget, you're looking for two additional deputies.
Yes.
Now, right now, you're running about 44% halfway through the year, so there's a little cushion there. So, we're not actually gonna change the budget. I would propose that we don't actually change the budget right now, but we're approving the hire with the, I mean, we're asserting that we're gonna cover this whatever...
If it need be.
Whatever it need be.
Okay.
Okay, so that was what I would suggest as the motion, is to cover, to approve the hiring of the two additional deputies and to, with the understanding that we'll address the budget revisions as needed going forward through the end of the fiscal year.
You have any questions?
No. I agree. I concur.
Yeah. I want to congratulate Sergeant Ralston and you Perry and Al, because we had asked for these numbers. I apologize. I say, Kizner, sorry. Because we requested the numbers so we could see it, and I think the public needs to understand, it isn't just two to cover, but actually would actually be 5.75. And I just did the numbers two, and that's 12.5% that the state police were covering that we're now gonna have to cover. So, with the understanding...
And to further rebut that, again, as you guys were explaining, you used to do one call, one call.
Right.
So it's a 1:1 ratio, but last year was a 5:1 ratio.
Correct.
And now it's running about an 8:1 ratio.
Exactly.
Just as the start of the year. So, there is a definite need, and the most important thing is, we need to get you just the people that are in the communities, so we can address it as soon as possible.
The prop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just for information, are you, could you explain the process real quickly of what you're now gonna do, so people know the process of how you're gonna do the hiring?
Okay, we've recently called Kerry's office for the next three names to come over. We'll do a, bring him into a Johnson-Roberts or thorough background. They'll have to go through an interview process. They'll have to go through a psychological. And if they are not a certified officer, then they'll be sent to the state police academy.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted everyone to know there is a process. We don't just...
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. To consider the recommendation by the Mon County Development Authority to approve the application submitted by Adavant for assistance from the coalbed methane fund. Did you want to suspend the rules to allow Rocky to speak on it? Is that okay?
Yeah, as the representative of the Development Authority, this came for a vote. The Development Authority recommended it. I would make a motion that we approve the application with discussion, and then I'd like to bring Mr. Gianola up to explain the actual fund, and then I'd also like to give Mr. Kimball from Adavant...
Oh, great.
...a chance to let everybody know what this is for and what the good things that they're doing over there at the industrial park.
Second.
Okay, prop move in second.
Okay. Mr. Gianola, would you like to come up and explain the application?
The application actually is part of a two-part application and part of a larger agreement with the state development office regarding Adavant and its very positive impact on the county here and jobs. The initial application was for a total of $200,000. $100,000 has already been approved by the Development Authority and provided. What's before you is the second leg of that $200,000. This application is for a grant through the severance fund for infrastructure and energy efficiencies, et cetera, coming from the state. The Development Authority, Mr. Kimball made a presentation to the Development Authority. We have the application and information, if the commission would like it, that was considered by the Development Authority as part of that...
Sure. Yeah. Commissioner Sakura had informed us of the situation. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is part of the overall process, and what we're asking the commission to do is to approve the disbursement of the second $100,000 from the coal severance fund for the infrastructure. I would like for Mr. Kimball to come up and give you a little bit of a background regarding Adavant and what they're doing. They're doing some really good things over there, and I think it would be important for the commission to know.
Great. Mr. Kimball, feel free.
Sure. I have mine. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you.
I can get one of your... unless you have an extra copy.
You might want to give one to our representative from Dominion Post.
He's over here on the right. The one who's taking notes.
So first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to come to address you all. My name's John Kimball. I'm the site director for the Adavant facility on the industrial park. What we do, I've got some slides in here of background. I'll go through them quickly, but I thought it might be helpful to, you know, to understand, you know, what we're about and what we're doing in the park, because there are a lot of very positive changes. We're a world, we have a leadership position in phosphites. What are phosphites? Plastics is the industry. Polyethylene, it literally is water bottles to Saran Wrap, to car parts, dashboards, and so forth. So it's many, many different products that are consumer products. These phosphites are the stabilization and antioxidants which allow those products to not crack and break down over time. So it's a critical part of that industry. We, a core value is safety for our site. We handle various materials. We're involved with process safety management, very dedicated management of change. We have a certification, ISO 14001, which is responsible care, dealing with the employee safety, the public safety, consumer safety. So it's very, it is a cornerstone of how we operate. We also have quality certifications as well and a relationship with the Department of Homeland Security. So the site was constructed in the 40s by DuPont. It's gone through various hands, producing the phosphites beginning in the 60s, and turned over several times. And Adavant, which is a relatively new company in 2013, purchased the facility for, and I'll talk about the real venture and the opportunity here. They purchased 11 sites across the world. This is what they are considering their flagship site for the company. So it's very important to us. The product that changed the game in phosphites for plastics is our Weston 705 product that's been developed over the years, the last six or seven years. The previous phosphites were recognized as an endocrine disruptor, which has some health risks to the public. Particularly, you've heard about plastics breaking down and water bottles. The Weston 705 product eliminated that issue. We have FDA certification and literal global acceptance and registration in all the major theaters Asia and Europe as well. So, a very, very key product. We expanded, we have some other products here that I've identified as well. We are continually developing other products that have been produced for many years and eliminating a key chemical which is also known to have some recognized health risks. So we are going down the path of eliminating all of those, and the development is occurring here. One of the things that's really been a bright spot for Adavant is the relationships, not only with the county and the state, but a strong relationship we formed with the college. So, we have many different partners in the chemistry department, the engineering department. We have hired interns and a lot of collaboration between our labs. So it's been a very, very, very positive experience for us. We recently developed a chemical operator. We recognized that we needed additional skills for our operators. It's an issue that exists in West Virginia. We'll need to tackle this more globally, but we tackled it for our plan. We partnered with the state and with West Virginia University, developed a curriculum, and they have been teaching our operators with their professors out of the chemical engineering department for the past year. So they're about to graduate, and so we will have a different level of capability just from the skill set. So, very, very positive as well. We talked about, Rocky talked about the memorandum of understanding, you know, and the expansion, the energy portion of this. And that's what I would really turn to talk about. And before I get to that, the one thing I wanted to point out is, we are expanding. We had our first expansion. We've been producing the 705 product for a number of years now, but we had a ribbon cutting last July. You see Secretary Thrasher there, and it represented a $13 million expansion. And that was kind of the catalyst for these incentives that we're talking about now. And so it's gonna continue. We have roughly half-sold out the second expansion, and we're planning a third expansion very, very shortly. We're actually in the process of doing some additional hiring. We have about a census of around 120, give or take. It always is a fluctuating number, but we're in the process of doing some more hiring. So let me turn to the request. One of the, you know, so we identified the training as an opportunity for us. The chemical industry has largely adopted this historian, data historian, as a way to continually improve your process. It is a, it's essentially a system that pulls all of our control systems, our lab systems, our business systems together under one system that's enabled with a web-enabled type, you know, software, where engineers, technicians, chemists can really watch the process in a way that we haven't been able to thus far. And when we, up till this point, when we look at process variability, we have to go to another system to look at the lab data and another system to look at the business data and where the material variance is. Very difficult to do that. This system will not only provide real-time recognition, but it will provide alerts if we are shifting in any way at all. The real value is, and this is, this is not new. There are over 4,000 licenses in the chemical industry of large companies like Exxon and so forth that use either this system or a system like this to do process optimization. This will really drive energy reduction in a way that's extremely positive. So, we'll continue to, as we continue to make more product, we want to keep our energy footprint as close to where it is today and allow that productivity to continue. Very, very important to the site. So that's the main thing. We also have a second project that we're working on. We work on the lighting. We have an opportunity to replace old outdated inefficient lighting fixtures, particularly outdoors, with new LED type, which will not only provide better lighting, less maintenance, but extremely lower, you know, a lot lower cost from an energy standpoint. This is important. We can do this a little piece at a time. The computer system has to be done all at once. So our plan is to get the PI system up and running within the next month. It literally can happen that fast. And then over the course of the year, work on the lighting project as well. So that gives you a kind of an idea of what we're asking for. Any questions?
No, I really appreciate you coming here. And again, a lot of people don't know the wonderful things that are going on over in the industrial park and with Adavant being the anchor of the park. So, really appreciate it. And the motion was to accept the recommendation from the Development Authority to approve the application.
The prop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ryan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking your time to come here, too.
I appreciate the opportunity.
We are now, any other new business?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. We're on reports from elected officials. Any elected official would like to speak? Okay. Okay. If not, reports from county commissioners?
Okay. It's, all of us are kind of a little bit behind the eight ball, because we've been in Charleston since Sunday. So, as Tom mentioned earlier, it's very good to be back home. There's something he said for every time you're on a trip, just getting back home and getting back in Morgantown. So, last, it has been a busy couple of weeks. I had my board of health meeting last Thursday, and then we had the conference that I said, and then the conference culminated with the Mon Preston County Day at the legislature. So, we had that yesterday. And it's gonna continue to be busy week. I have a meeting with the board of health chair tomorrow, and Friday I have a meeting with, I had a group out at the airport request to meet with me, and I'm meeting with them on Friday. And then next week on Monday, this has been something that I've been asked a couple months ago to come meet with the board of directors for United Bank. And of course, if somebody wants to meet with me, I'll make an appointment, and I'll meet with all those guys on Monday. One of the things we got from the conference, and again, being, we had a lot of discussion on the opioid crisis. And I recall back the CBS story about Kermit, West Virginia, and we were talking, they were talking about some of the numbers, and just looking at the numbers about, you know, this one town, and both of these towns are in Mingo County. One town had, one pharmacy had nine million pills distributed out of it over a two-year period. And the, there's only a population of 392 people. I mean, that's incredible. That's 22,900 pills. That's twenty-two-thousand-nine-hundred pills per resident over that two-year period. And if, if it were just for the residents, they'd have to ingest thirty-one pills, thirty-one and a half pills a day for two years. And then, as I was leaving Charleston, I saw their paper, and it talked to another city, again Williamson, in Mingo County, that had twenty-two million, twenty-two, or twenty-point-eight million pills distributed to two pharmacies in a town of twenty-nine-hundred people. So it, we don't, it's, it's bad here, but it's really bad there. I mean, Mon County, I got some statistics from the Health Department, that we're in the better end of the state as far as numbers, but the state itself is the worst of the worst, so that's not necessarily a good thing. So I, I hope that locally, we can, you know, continue discussions and continue efforts that, you know, we've already started, or already started regarding the opioid crisis. But this is really eye-opening when you look at those numbers and look at, you know, the effect of how this stuff was dumped on West Virginia, and now the, the effect of that is going to, for every person, it probably affects seven family members, seven friends, seven other individuals. It's just catastrophic, and I'm just glad people are starting to really understand how bad this is, and what a hole we have to crawl out of. But not to end on such a bad note, but it's really, it was really eye-opening.
As a person who had power of prescription, I'm not going to rail on what the things happened over the course of the past twenty years. But I did think there was one thing that we did pull away from this, the West Virginia Preston Day, as well as the conference, that we were able to network really well, I think, particularly with our commissioners in Preston County and Marion County discussing collaborative projects that we might want to look forward to in the upcoming year. The other thing was, and I wasn't aware of this, that there is a number, two-one-one, which is a clearing center for social services. I actually would like to see if we couldn't have a short presentation to our commission just for enlightenment. You know, I'm not going to try and explain everything about what is presented to us, but I, I think it would be to the advantage of the citizens to know that this call center does physically exist. The chamber dinner that I represent commission on Thursday was a great format. I would like to salute really the, you know, the, the Chamber of Commerce, because they shook things up, allowed for more people to, a lot of networking. It was very enjoyable. It was not a long-drawn-out affair that has been sometimes in the past. I'm not negating prior, you know, previous chamber dinners that I've been to, but sometimes have been a little bit longer than, than others. And lastly, I would like to make a little congratulations to our newest four-H All-Stars, Chloe Quarter, Thomas Genoy, but more particularly to Mr. Jim Bowers. Jim is a volunteer of exemplary service, and that's the motto of this particular group. This is the highest award you can receive in four-H. Jim is on the volunteer fire department at Sheep Lake, has been for many years, and then has became a shotgun coach of teams that now have made national appearances. So the influence that he's made in his community in the Sheep Lake area with respect to not only the, you know, the volunteer fire department, but that which work which he does, I think, should be noted for his service. Thank you.
Thank you. As both had stated, we were down in Charleston, and I think one thing that I think the public needs to know is, I think Montague County has changed, and has become a big influence down in Charleston. Several of the bills that were discussed in the leadership were Montague County bills. And as we were leaving, we received a text from Joe Statler that said that they are about this week to enter the mountain bike trail bill, so it's going to have a number. So it's just one more thing that is coming from this area, so we'll find that out. Also, you know, it was a great meeting, when you could get Mitch Carmichael, well, his representative, Tim Armstead, Shelley Capito, Joe Manchin, Evan Jenkins, and the governor all in the same room at one time. And you know, it's an election year, but it was very interesting, and they were very interested in the county commissioners' concerns, and I think we were able to voice those concerns, and we're looking forward to working with them. The next thing I do want to say is, several months ago, we had the, Dan Carrier from the Health Department had come to us about the possibility of a mobile dental clinic. And I contacted Sean to tell him that, Dan had reached out to me, I reached out to two city council members who were at a meeting with Lee Smith, we met last week, on the possibility of they were looking for equipment to fund for next year, this mobile dental clinic. And what's neat about it is, that the school system is bought into it, and we are looking projectively to go take this mobile dental clinic to the schools, and to senior centers, and to areas inside the city and the county. And it was great to see that both the city and the county want to work together on a positive project, and we'll keep you informed. Now, Ed, you'll understand this better than me, he first wanted a hundred-thousand-dollar machine, he now has changed, and we are looking at only a twenty-thousand-dollar used digital Panorex?
Yes.
Okay. Good, I did have it right down. So the costs has come down, we want to work together on this, so it's something that I think the whole county's going to benefit, and I wanted you all to be aware of it. And finally, I have to say this once every fifty years, this happens, E-A-G-L-E-S, the Eagles are in the Super Bowl, so go Philadelphia Eagles, I had to say that. Do I have a motion?
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Promptly moved in second, thank you. You adjourn.